Make sure we're rolling here.
Yeah. Um, confirm with M line and then, uh, fair TV, fair TV, I saw the thumbs up, fair TV. You know, a nod of the head, but I don't see anybody there. Uh, should we just presume that they are ready to go? Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, very good.
Let's play rip.
All right. Call the meeting to order. This is the July twenty eighth, twenty twenty, meeting of the town plan and zoning commission for the town of Fairfield. Uh, thank you to everyone who, uh, is joining us here on this, uh, WebEx remote platform. I think, uh, slowly but surely, we're making improvements to, uh, our process and, um, I think also we all are becoming better equipped to handle doing these things, uh, virtually, uh, and, you know, remotely. Um, we do have a, uh, actively light agenda. We have, uh, two items. The first is, uh, old business zoning regulation amendment. Uh, the application of the town of plan and the town plan and zoning commission to amend section two point twelve, flood management and thirty-two flood protection of the Fairfield zoning regulations.
Okay, um, Mr. Chairman, this, this application has really three main, um, purposes to it. The fir- first and foremost, we want to make sure our regulations are in sync with the requirements of the National Flood Insurance Program and some new regulation tweaks that they have made. Um, secondly, there's a requirement in, in a lot of the language that we're proposing is a lot of the requires a plus one foot elevation standard for, uh, that's, that's now a, a requirement of the building code. And it's a requirement for us. We are a CRS participating community, meaning that, um, we are, our flood insurance holders are eligible for ten percent, uh, policy discount. And for us to maintain that, we need to adopt this one foot pre-board standard. Uh, that's part of the proposal before you. And lastly, there's a couple of housekeeping issues that are not part of the minimum FEMA code, but are, are a regulatory issue for us, uh, that we need to codify into the regulations. I'll give you a couple of examples. Um, thirty-one point two point one F is the section that requires electric meter platforms, uh, to be elevated. That is a requirement that the United Technology, or I'm sorry, United Illuminating is requiring for new meters, uh, have to, in order for them to access an elevated meter, they're requiring a platform with a stair. So that's becoming part of our regulation. Um, in section thirty-two point three D, uh, we're clarifying, uh, some language regarding foundation openings, uh, to codify some of the policy issues that we've been carrying forward with applications. And similarly, in section thirty-two point five C, uh, there's some, um, maximum pile sizes, um, and maximum sizes for fully enclosed structures, uh, below the lowest floor. Um, we did provide you with a revised draft with a couple of tweaks that we made to it subsequent to the public hearing. We did get some, uh, some good input from members of the, uh, flood erosion control board. We made a couple of minor changes that are highlighted in yellow in the draft that we had previously sent. It doesn't really substantively change what we are proposing, but some good suggestions, uh, were had and, and we've tried to incorporate some of those. So, um, that is all I have at this point, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Well, thanks very much. This is, uh, you know, relatively dense, uh, so we may have some other
Yep.
questions for explanation. Um, so with, um, you know, can I have a motion?
Tommy Noonan, motion to approve.
Great. Thanks. Thank you, Tom.
Okay.
Motion approved by Commissioner Noonan and a second by Commissioner Corcoran. Thank you. Um, so, uh, Commissioner Noonan, do you, do you want to start or?
Um, just pro forma, I guess, based on the, what, uh, staff has said, the reasons for these, uh, amendments. Uh, having looked at the amendments, I would, um, move to approve. I have nothing really specific to add.
Okay. And Commissioner Corcoran?
Same here.
Um, I mean, perhaps, um, Mr. Went, what, what would be helpful is if you could just step us through the changes that were made as a result of the flood and erosion control boards in, input. I think we all went through the original version.
Mm-hmm.
To, um, you know, to my eye, some of these, uh, do change a little bit. Uh, you know, the meaning of the, uh, of the language. Um, and, uh, some of them were just corrections.
Correct.
But, um, uh, you know, for example, uh, I noticed one change, uh, the enclosures to exceed two hundred ninety-nine square feet is, you know, that's got to come from somewhere.
Yeah, that, I can, I can explain that. There, there is a provision, uh, it's really part of the FEMA insurance code. There's really two levels of FEMA regulation. There's the minimum regulation that we have to follow. But we have come to learn over, uh, time and experience that there's also a separate layer of regulation on how the insurance side of FEMA rates a structure. So what we're trying to do is, um, avoid a situation where someone thinks they're meeting all of the criteria and then have an issue. For example, they have a entry enclosure that's, that's larger than two hundred ninety-nine feet. And now that puts them in a different insurance rating category. So what we're trying to do is, is be consistent with that language. So before, we thought the language said, um, an enclosure greater than three hundred square feet, but the language says an enclosure, um, of three hundred square feet or more. So we, so that's why we dropped the three hundred to two ninety-nine. So if someone has an enclosure that's two ninety-nine, they're not going to get bumped into a higher insurance rating. And I know that's not really a regulatory thing, but we don't want to give the impression of, of they're complying with the standards and then find themselves in a higher, uh, paying more for insurance because, uh, we, we permitted them to have an enclosure that's larger than what, uh, that category. So that's why we've moved three hundred to two ninety-nine. Uh, we did, one of the things we did, uh, agree with, um, the, in the next section, there's a provision that if you have, um, an open pier foundation, you're allowed to have a louver or lattice enclosure around that as long as the openings, uh, in the lattice or louvers, or at least forty percent of the area. That's consistent with the FEMA technical guideline. We had originally proposed a higher standard of fifty percent. Uh, we agreed that reducing it down to be inconsistent with the FEMA technical bulletin standard of forty percent, uh, makes sense. And we want to clarify that when we say fully enclosed, there's a difference of, when we say fully enclosed, that means a solid wall. If you are taking a, um, open pier foundation and putting lattice or louvers around it, that's not considered fully enclosed, uh, under this, uh, standard. So that's the distinction between a, an area that might have, uh, solid walls limited to an area of two hundred ninety-nine feet, but the rest of your perimeter of your foundation can be enclosed with lattice or louvers provided that, uh, there's a minimum of forty percent, uh, opening there. So we've, we've reduced the fifty percent to forty percent. Um, there was some confusing, uh, some language that we had proposed in the draft that's not in the FEMA regulation on the following page about wind loads. Water loading values have to be those associated with the base flood, but the wind loading are all part of the building code requirements so that we remove that sentence out of our, uh, proposal. Um, those are really the only substantive. There were some corrections or some grammatical things that we, uh, cured. So, uh, I don't believe them to be, uh, particularly substantive changes, but we did, uh, appreciate the input and comments that we did receive.
Very good. So that, um, restriction, uh, to, hold on, I'm just trying to get back to that spot. So restriction on, uh, enclosures with breakaway walls not to exceed two hundred ninety-nine square feet. It's, it's not that a, a, an enclosure with breakaway walls can't be built more than three hundred feet, but that, that homeowner will just have to pay additional premiums?
Well, what we, what we are proposing is that the regulation would limit the size of that enclosure to two hundred ninety-nine feet. It's not limited presently. Uh, we've had some issues with the ultimate design and implementation of breakaway walls, and we're trying to make a stricter standard, um, because we have seen, um, after the fact, conversion of space to non-compliant space. So we're trying to, uh, keep the standard for a solid enclosure to the minimum size that, um, FEMA permits without kicking it to another, um, insurance classification. But at the same time, that would represent a restriction to, to a maximum size that's currently unrestricted.
Right. And, and so my, my guess, driving off of your comments, my point is, uh, there are, uh, reasons other than insurance premiums that we are putting in place these, um, these restrictions.
Yes, yes, I, that is true.
Okay. Is that, is that true for, for all the changes? I, I don't want this to be, um, you know?
No, I can walk through the changes, the, the, um, a lot of the language that's in here talks to the requirement of an additional foot above the base flood elevation. That's a required element, uh, to be included. Um, the, the, the ones that are discretionary, if you will, that we are proposing to be more restrictive than the code would permit would be the three hundred or the two hundred ninety-nine square foot, um, solid enclosure, a limit on the, uh, section thirty-two point five, uh, a limit on the dimension of any columns, for an open column foundation. And a requirement, um, for grade beams to be a minimum of five feet below. There, there's supposed to be an engineer certification that the grade beams are below, uh, the existing grade to the point where they'd be resistant to scour. Uh, and rather than doing an engineering analysis, if they go to a depth of five feet, um, that's going to be below the, uh, the scour line. So that is, that's an example of, uh, uh, a criteria that exceeds the minimum standard.
Yep, but for reasons, right?
Yep, the rest, I believe, are, uh, exactly consistent with what the FEMA language is.
Very good. Does anyone else have any other questions or, yes, Commissioner? And then Commissioner Corcoran and then Levy. Commissioner?
Thank you. Uh, so, uh, thank you for the effort. Uh, it was one, thanks staff for the effort that went into these regulations and in trying to address some of the comments that were made by members of the flood erosion control board and also, um, you know, helpful, um, presentation. I have a couple of, uh, questions that are in the nature of technical or typographical issues. And then I have one or two that are slightly more substantive. On, uh, thirty-two point two A, I noticed that, uh, you did change the phrase base flood level to base flood elevation. But that elsewhere in the regulations, uh, it's referred to, uh, I guess the first time it appears in the subsection, that term is referred to as base flood elevation parentheses BFE. And then later on, in, within a particular provision, the, the phrase BFE is used. I wondered whether for consistency, uh, the base flood elevation should be defined as BFE in parentheses the first time it appears in thirty-two point two A, and then thereafter in that provision, BFE should be used. But I think that whether you refer to it as base flood elevation or BFE, it is, it is clear. So I just propose that as, as a, um, a, uh, definitional issue.
Yep.
Uh, on, uh, thirty-two point three, pardon me, on thirty-two point, I had to thirty-two point five C, the final paragraph. Uh, I noticed that the wind loading values have a reference to applicable state or local standards. I, I assume that, uh, and I, I guess I heard, uh, somebody say that the applicable standard is the, uh, state building code. And I wondered what, if any, local standards there were.
Okay, I, we, the, the town has not adopted a standard, uh, stricter, more strict than the, uh, state building code.
But, but it could in the future.
Theoretically, that, yeah, that's language straight out of the FEMA, um, boilerplate language.
Okay, and that was my next question. If, if it is, uh, boilerplate language from FEMA, then I would certainly leave it alone. But, um, if it were not, then perhaps, you know, state, state and local. Um, because it seems, it seems to me that if you can meet either the state or the local, uh, wind loading values, uh, but wind loading value standards, then perhaps there's, in the, in theory, the local standard could be, uh, less restrictive. But in practice, it doesn't appear that the local requirement could be any less stringent. So I would leave that alone. Thank you for, um, addressing that. And, uh, in, uh, thirty-two point five D, uh, the word, I guess, three lines down, the word purposed, P U R P O S E D, uh, I don't know whether that is, uh, should be purposes.
Well, I think that should be proposed.
Proposed, okay. Proposed, thank you. And then, um, I suppose my only substantive question is similar to the issue raised by, uh, the chairman. Um, in thirty-two point, thirty-two point five G, um, it states any enclosure below BFE may be subject to increased flood insurance premium. Is that functioning as a warning to, uh, homeowners or designers or builders in the regulation, in our regulations that they may do this, that they are risking increased flood insurance premiums if they do? And, um, are there other instances in our regulations where we have included provisions that are not so much regulating thou shall not or thou shall, but instead providing guidance?
That's, that's an excellent question. I, I, I'm not aware of any other section of our regulations where we have a statement that's not a regulatory requirement, that's kind of guidance for some other aspect. Um, it, you know, this has been such a changing in, in moving target for us over the years, particularly after Sandy, as FEMA changes regulations and insurance requirements, uh, become more stringent. Um, that was just, it's, it's really kind of a public service announcement that, that, hey, um, just so you know, um, you know, so it's not required to be there. It was just something that we put in as, as just kind of, um, as, as a heads up, but it's, it's not. But, but your, your point is a good one. I, I can't think of another place in the regulations where we make such a statement.
Then, since there, there is an evil that you're trying to remedy here by, you know, and it sounds like, um, there's at least some instances that you're aware of, um, Jim, where, um, you know, homeowners have been caught unawares by an increased flood insurance premium as a result of, um, having an enclosure greater than three hundred square feet. That maybe in the process, in the approval process, there could be some sort of boldface warning, uh, that tries to ensure that it, it may not necessarily be in the regulation itself.
Yeah, I mean.
As, as part of the process that, you know, that, that at least gives people a last clear chance to make this decision for themselves.
Yeah, that, that's a fair point. We, we can certainly communicate that through the review, the administrative review in, in permit process, short of, you know, stating it in the regulations. If you don't think it's appropriate to be there, I don't have any issue with its removal. And we can communicate that, uh, by different means.
I'd like to hear the opinions of other commissioners on that issue. But thanks for addressing it.
True.
What, uh, was the specific reference there on, on the last point?
It's thirty-two point five G.
Yeah, so that, that gets to the, the, the point. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, on that point, uh, I would agree that I don't think we need the warning.
Yeah, not relation.
But I do have a question with respect to that. Um, are breakaway walls as a close, as opposed to lattice walls defined anywhere, either in the building code or in our regulations?
Um, the breakaway walls, I, are, um, you don't have, again, this isn't the entirety of section thirty-two that you have before you. Um, let me just take a quick. Um, breakaway walls are a specific definition in the definitions section of sections in section thirty-two point eight in our existing regs. It's thirty-two point eight F. Uh, and there is a specific definition for a, a breakaway wall. The lattice enclosure, uh, section, uh, is not currently spelled out in our regulations. It's, it's in a FEMA guidance document, um, uh, technical bulletin five that talks about zero obstruction below, uh, the lowest floor. And that's where the forty percent open lattice or louver requirement comes from.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Corcoran, I think, uh, Commissioner Levy, you, you're all set?
Uh, I had one other point, but I'll wait till after Commissioner Corcoran.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, I was going to bring up the same point that Lenny did about, uh, section G. Um, the other comment, I was wondering if we, uh, if we had incorporated anything from the public comments from the public hearing.
I, I, I can't recall, uh, sitting here, what the public comments were beyond the, the written doc, the documents that were submitted. We did have a conversation and some emails back and forth by one other member of the flood erosion control board that made some suggestions that we, um, don't disagree with. We don't disagree with the premise of some of the things they're saying, but disagreed that they were part of the, should be part of this regulation. So, um, I'm, I'm not sure that addresses your question, but I don't recall, as I sit here, what any other specific comments were, uh, at, at the hearing.
I don't remember many others, other than to consult with the flood erosion control board and, um, some of the few nets that I think are covered in there.
Yep, okay.
Yeah.
That's it for me.
Okay. I, specifically, you, you don't recall anything in particular that, um, was mentioned that, that we didn't, that is not addressed in the, in the edits?
No, I just wanted to, um, I guess, one of a goodwill kind of thing, if, uh, if we did incorporate anything. Um, just, uh, wanted to, that gentleman who appeared before us, I wanted him to feel that his voice was heard.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep, we, 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 we shared. I'm sorry.
Um, Becky Buneal had made a, a technical point and said she didn't really know the answer. But I remember her questioning something.
Yeah, we've, we've, we've communicated back and forth and we've shared the revised draft, uh, with them. And I'm sure this will be a continuing dialogue going forward because some of the points that were raised, uh, we agree with. They're just not regulatory, um, in our view, didn't belong in this particular regulation. But that doesn't mean we, we're not going to continue to dialogue in, in a greater, in a broader sense with other agencies within the town.
Okay. All right, um, any other comments or questions? I mean, I, I, yes, Commissioner Levy?
Yes, um, turning to thirty-two point one F, the section regarding the, uh, elevated platform for, uh, um, let's get it, um, for electric utility meters and service panels. Uh, with that, also, the thing goes on to talk about AC condenser and generator platforms and states that those must meet the required setbacks of the underlying zone. Uh, have we considered whether or not this new three by three platform, uh, would also have to meet the required setback? Or could it be within the setback area? Uh, I mean, if it's, let's say, along a sideline, it could, uh, require that the whole house be moved three feet further away just to accommodate this. And, uh, what would happen if you have the, uh, utility meter on one side and an AC condenser on the other? So I guess my question, is it intended that this utility meter, uh, would also have to meet the setback? Uh, utility meter platform would also have to, uh, set requirements?
Yes, uh, it, it is. And if it's, and if it's not clear with this language, we can certainly, uh, combine that to, to clarify that both of those or any of those platforms are included in setback. Um, it would really, the, these, um, the utility meters in particular really only apply to new construction. So what we're trying to codify in the language so that this, you know, so that they take it into a consideration. What we've been faced with is it comes as an afterthought that the house is built, the meter's there, and then UI comes out and tells them they need a three by three platform that's now not been designed into the project from, from the start. So, um, we can certainly clarify that it's the intention that the, um, utility meter platform be included in setback as is the other, uh, meter. But again, as to aid, is the intention is to call it out as a requirement. So it's, it's not an after the fact add-on that creates problems, uh, on completion that there, we're, uh, adding it so that we can consider it in part of the initial review, uh, because it's mainly, uh, impacting new construction. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions or comments, uh, discussion? Okay, so I think, uh, the motion is to approve, but based upon what we've, uh, heard here, I think there is a friendly amendment to remove thirty-two point five, thirty-two point zero sub G about the advisory on the insurance premiums. Um, and I'm sorry, there was one other point that you were going to say that you, that you just made about, um, changing something.
Thirty, thirty-two point one F.
Thirty-two.
To clarify that the three by three utility meter also must meet, um, setbacks in the underlying zone.
Yes, okay. So, um, did, does anyone else have any other suggested revisions or, or tweaks? No, okay. So then Commissioner?
And Jim also said that all the generators and compressors must be within the setbacks also.
Correct. It, it, that, it's clear that.
Is that clear?
State that, but we need to combine that with the other, uh, platform. So, yeah.
All right. You know, because that's a lot of footage that you've got to have within your setback.
Yeah, the setback's going to vary on location, but, but.
Substantial equipment size.
Yeah, okay. So is that, is that a third thing or is that, uh, subsumed in the, uh, in the language?
I, I think that's subsumed in, in Mr. Levy's comment.
Yeah, okay. Very good. Uh, all right then. Commissioner Noonan, you agree to the friendly amendment to, to, yes, okay. And Commissioner Corcoran?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Are we all ready to vote? Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions? All right, the, uh, regulation amendments, uh, as amended, uh, are passed unanimously. Thanks, everyone.
Yeah, I do, um, as always, appreciate your thorough and thoughtful, uh, review and, and commentary.
I mean, look, you know, after the fact, right? It's not, if you don't live in the beach. It's not, if you don't live in the beach area and you're not familiar with this kind of, this kind of stuff, you know, this gets, this gets a little dense. So, okay. Our next topic is our planning discussion. Among other things, we would like to review feedback from the winter POCD public forums. And I also asked staff to provide us with a review of 830G affordable housing in town, both with respect to sort of the basics of the statute and the applications, as well as a summary of where we stand today. And Mr. Wendt served that spreadsheet before the meeting. And that, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, I'm just going to say, Mr. Chairman, it might be easier for those of you, for all of you actually, to, for the next, because not only are we going to put up a spreadsheet that we shared to enlarge the, your ability to see what we're going to share, if you close the participants panel, so you're not seeing, the tricky part is, for you, Mr. Chairman, you're not going to see anybody else, but you'll hear everybody, is it will make the screen larger and easier to view. So if you close that panel, if you choose to, it'll make your screen a little bit larger. So MLIN looks to be trying to get the spreadsheet shared. So wait a second, I can't, it looks just on my screen, MLIN is just a black screen. I don't see the document.
Sorry, let me fix, let me figure out why that's not working. Hold on.
Jim, there's, well, a member of the public has something in chat.
Yeah, we are, we can certainly share the spreadsheet with anybody that likes it. We're trying to get it up on the screen so everybody can see it.
Let me start that again, here we go.
If anybody would like it, just send me an email and I'm happy to forward. I will preface this by saying that this spreadsheet, it was prepared, and this is the work of Mark Barnhart. So I don't take credit for this. This is Mark's work in tracking this. He was, shared it with us. And so this is where we stand. So you're, the commission is familiar with the requirements for an 8-30G review of an application that the normal zoning regulations don't apply. Normal application, of course, you're measuring the application against our regulatory standards. And in 8-30G, that's not the case. We measured against whether or not there's a definable, quantifiable, public health safety issue that could result or will result from the project in which public health or safety issue is, is more important than the need for affordable housing, which we all know is a bit of a, you know, weighted thumb on the scale type of process. But the statute does allow for towns to qualify for moratorium status for a period of time if we achieve record progress towards more affordable housing units. And what that is, is we need HUEP, or housing unit equivalent points, that's what HUEP is, equal to 2% of the total housing units in the town. So for Fairfield, that means we need 433 points to qualify. So what this spreadsheet does, and if, yeah, this is, if you keep it right there, MLIN.
But let's, let's take, let's take a small step back.
Okay.
All right, I think, you know, we do have some newer members of the commission. We have members of the public who have listened in or who have come in to attend. And I think it would be helpful to frame the, the nature of the statute. And, you know, how that, it's actually called the appeals, an appeals statute. But.
Okay, I can back up a bit.
Yeah, I mean, to speak to the, and I'm happy to as well, you know, speak to the 10% requirement, right? The towns that, you know, there is a running tally kept at the housing department at the state level where the percentages are monitored. And there are handful of fairly dense cities like Danbury and Bridgeport and others, Hartford and surrounding, some of the surrounding areas that do have more than 10% and were exempt from the statute. The vast majority of towns in the state of Connecticut have had at the time of passage, and for the most part still do, have less than 10% of their housing units that are designated under the statutes algebra as affordable units and therefore subject to the statute. And what the statute essentially says is that for those towns in which the affordable, number of affordable units is less than 10%, developers can comply with this fairly complex requirements of setting aside certain number of affordable units according to, in different levels, according to various areas for the, according to the average income levels across the state. And if they do that, then their development is exempt from local zoning regulations. It simply, the local zoning regulations do not apply to that, to that development. That's where Mr. Wendt was speaking about the, the burden in the appeal process. And that, that's, that's why it's called the appeal statute. Because basically, if any development is denied and that developer appeals, the applicant appeals that denial, the burden shifts to the town to prove, based upon evidence in the record, that there was a substantial public health safety risk, quantifiable and not simply probable, but measurable, that outweighs the need for affordable housing in the town. And if the town cannot meet that burden, then the statute directs the court to reverse and remand. So long as it can't be, and if, if there is a safety issue that is deemed to outweigh affordable housing, then well, the commission as well as the court needs to look at ways that, changes that could be made to alleviate that. Right? So then there is a long way to go for a town that doesn't have 10% to meet the 10%. And so there is this moratorium, which is available to towns after a certain number of affordable housing units have been built. As those percentages increase, this is what Mr. Wendt is going to, going to walk through this. And I would also like you to walk through the moratorium, the, the process, procedure. There is a threshold beyond which towns can apply for and be granted what's called a moratorium, such that those exemptions under the statute and those procedures under the statute don't apply for a period of time. Right? So I guess with that background and hopefully that's helpful for. Walking out, ask if you could please move to line. Feedback. And so, Mr. Wendt, with that, that brief synopsis, if you would like to expand on any, anything I've said or correct anything I've said, move on to the point as such.
No, that was well stated, Mr. Chairman, just a couple of things. You are correct, there are only 30 municipalities out of 169 towns in Connecticut that are currently exempt from the appeals process statute because they have their 10%. So 30 out of 169 communities are exempt. The other 139 communities are wrestling with the same issues at different scales than, than we are. And, you know, so qualifying development, which is a set aside development defined by the statute, is one that sets aside at least 30% of its units at below market rate. 15% of them have to be owned or rented by folks that make no more than 80% of the area median income. And then another 15% at a lower threshold, that's 60% of the area median income. And there's a calculus by which towns that do approve or otherwise produce actual affordable housing units can qualify for a moratorium. The initial moratorium period is four years for which you, the town would be exempt from the appeals process. And the way that's calculated is on the bottom of the sheet, there's, there's the point totals. Again, you need, we have, based on our last census, 21,648 housing units. So therefore, 2% of that would be 433 housing unit equivalency points that we would need. And the way those points are calculated, there's, is in the bottom here, that a, an age restricted unit at 80% AMI is worth a half a point. Family units at 80%, meaning it's not age restricted, is worth one point. If it's an owner occupied unit, one and a half points. If it's a rental unit, if that income threshold is at 60%, it's one and a half points for a owner occupied unit, two points for a rental unit. And if there's a deeper level of affordability at 40% AMI, which we've seen in two, two projects, it's two points for an ownership unit and two and a half points for a rental unit. We do get a modest quarter point, .25 points for every market rate unit in a set aside development. So that the extra units that a developer proposes to offset the cost of the below market rate units, we do get to credit a quarter of a point for each of those units. And any three bedroom units also get an additional quarter of a point. So if we look at this box at the top of this screen, we have presently, again, needing 433 points to qualify for a moratorium. We have 341 and a half points today. We have a number of developments, the next column of projects that have been approved, total 206 points. But in order to achieve points, those projects have to be approved and have a certificate of occupancy issued. Out of that 260 points that are out there for projects that have been approved, there are, we have 44 and a half points, really in active construction. That's a project on Uncle Road, Trademark II, and 1675 Post Road. Those three projects, which are in various stages of completion, would represent 44 and a half points. So we would need another 47 points beyond those projects to qualify for an initial moratorium. So there's 161 and a half other points out there in projects that are approved, but not yet built. But we don't get credit for any of those until they're actually constructed. So if we do achieve 433 points, there's an initial period of four years for which we would be exempt from the appeals process. In that process, to achieve that is it has to be approved by the Department of Housing. There's a process by which, you know, the town would submit documentation similar to this spreadsheet and documenting the point totals. There's a public announcement that gets published in the Connecticut Law Tribune. And then the Department of Housing could ultimately issue the certification for the moratorium. There is an opportunity for a subsequent moratorium if we do qualify. And I should say more likely when we qualify for a four-year moratorium. If we were to achieve an additional 326 points, the threshold for a subsequent moratorium is slightly less for communities that have over 20,000 housing units, which we do. So that's 326 points to qualify for a subsequent moratorium of five years. So we could possibly achieve that if, you know, all of those 206 points of projects that have been approved are completed. One of the biggest challenges we face compared to some other communities, particularly smaller communities, is we have a fairly large base number of housing units for which we, this calculus begins at 24,000 and change. You know, towns that have much smaller base numbers of housing units don't need nearly as many, need to create nearly as many units to qualify for moratorium. One of the other things we are looking at are opportunities to convert existing units that may already exist that don't count because they're not deed restricted into deed restricted units. We are exploring ways presently to perhaps capture some of the 170 or so accessory apartments that we have on the books and looking at opportunities to maybe incentivize folks to deed restrict those. And if we get enough takers on that, you know, could hopefully get us those 47 additional points that might get us to initial moratorium considerations. So if we scroll up, MLIN, to the, to the top of the spreadsheet.
Let me, let me, let me just interrupt you there for, okay, before we get into some of the, you know, the, I think the weeds of this project. You know, I, I think it will be helpful to walk through some of this detail that we see in actual spreadsheet to understand, you know, which of the projects that we have reviewed in the past, that we've approved, the stage of development and so forth. But let's go back down to the, to the sheet that we were just on, if you would, yeah, thank you. Right? So when we talk about in development approved under construction, how long does a developer have, once the project is approved by us in order to build the project?
If it were approved prior to May, I'm sorry, if it was approved prior to July 1 of 2011, it would have nine years plus five years of extension. If it was approved thereafter, it would be five years plus a five-year extension. So essentially 10 years from date of approval.
Okay, do we, do we, okay, 10, 10, 10 years from the, from the date of approval. All right, and, and in terms of the, the portion of points that we need to get in order to first apply for a moratorium, at what stage does, in the development and occupancy, does the calculation, the official calculation of the points occur?
It is my understanding that it is at the point at which a certificate of occupancy has been issued for the building.
Okay, so once developer completes the project, goes and gets a certificate of occupancy, then those points are a sort of official, if you will. And it's not contingent upon the landlord or the developer either renting or selling those units? Actually being occupied, yeah.
That is my, I'm kind of flipping through the statute right now, but that is my understanding.
Yeah, okay, all right.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm reading, I'll read for, a newly constructed unit shall be counted towards a moratorium when it receives a certificate of occupancy. Newly restricted units shall be counted towards a moratorium when its deed restricted, when its deed restriction takes effect. So, so it's a two-pronged thing. The deed restriction has to be recorded and taking effect. And the certificate of occupancy has to have been issued.
And I mean, given, given the demand that we hear about and the data that we've been presented at various meetings, it seems that such units would not have difficulty being sold by the developer once available. once they came online. That, that would be a real sort of incongruency if those units were difficult to rent or sell, given the, given the incentives under the statute and, and the volume frankly, with which they're, they're being built. So, so that's good. All right. Then, once those numbers are achieved, what is the process by which, that, that we would need to go through in order to attain the moratorium status? And how long do we think that that might take?
It takes several months by my understanding. You know, you have to apply to the DOH. There's a period at which there's a published notice that the application for moratorium status is, is pending. The Commissioner of Housing, I believe, has 35 days after that notice. So it's a couple of months, but then there's some back and forth. If, if, if the DOH challenges the, the numbers, you know, they have a right to, to ask for additional information. Let me just see. So it, it doesn't take effect until the Commissioner of Housing issues a, I'm trying to think of what the term of art is in the language here. I'm trying to talk and read at the same time, but it's, it's, it's not, it, it's a several month process. It's not one that happens instantly, but it's one that can't be put in the works until the points are achieved. And then it moves forward to the Department of Housing.
Okay. All right. So before we get to the grid, do any of the commissioners have any questions or comments or, you know, want, want more information about any of these subjects? Sure, Commissioner Braun. Yeah, you, you're muted, Commissioner Braun. Sorry, you're, you're on mute.
I'm using two computers here. Okay. Can you list the, I only got caught Unqua and Trademark II. What were the other two that are approved but not fully constructed yet?
Yeah, we're gonna, gonna go through the, the granular, the details, which I called the weeds. We go back to that, to the spreadsheet and we can talk about individual projects.
Okay, I have a general question. Okay.
So for the moment, you know, we, we've got the basic sort of foundation of the, of the statute, the lay of the land generally in terms of, you know, where Fairfield sits in the mix. The, you know, the 10%, the moratorium, the total number of points, the breakout by number of points, given the categories. Here, the HUEP points, how they get calculated, the process for a moratorium, any of that stuff. Does anybody have any comments or questions, discussion on any of those topics? Commissioner Berman.
Yeah, I just missed the time period that the builder has to construct after approval.
So generally 10 years. I don't think we have any approvals from prior to 2011, which would be nine years ago, that, that have not yet been built. Although when we go through the list, we can, we can see. But after that, 10 years from the date of approval.
Thank you.
Francis. How do I, I guess we have to go back to, okay.
Did Jim say we have 21,648 units, housing units for 24,000? I heard him say both numbers.
We have approximately 24,000 housing units in the town. And that's what the number, the percentages are roughly calculated around.
Yeah, the number, the number, Mr. Chairman, is 20, 21,648, 21648.
There you go.
Okay.
So I have a question about. Where does this 24,000 word come from?
I don't know what we're talking about with 24,000. I may have misstated.
You said 21648.
21.
Yeah, said 24,000. That's where I didn't know.
Okay, well, that may have.
216.
21648 is the number.
Okay. Commissioner Braun.
Okay, so just conceptually here, so we have 21648. Of that, 2% have to, 2% have to be added up from the HUEP points, not actual numbers of units, but however the points are assigned.
Yeah.
You don't know what 2% is till you figure out the type of unit, the quantity of unit, the type of unit. And then you figure out how it gets to that 2%. And the same thing would be for the 10%.
Yeah, so it's not 2%. Presently, we have about 2 point, roughly 2.5% affordable in the town. The number is 10% is the, is the, i- i- is the, this doesn't apply to you anymore. And 4% is the threshold to apply for a moratorium. You are correct. It's not, if you're not speaking, mute your line.
Okay, I'm confused now.
Meg, could you please mute your line?
Me?
Meg, Francis, Commissioner Francis.
Can I what?
Mute your line. Thank you very much. Commissioner Braun.
To get to the 433 points we need for moratorium, that 43, 433 is, is determined by taking 2% of the 21,000 housing units. And then to get to that 433 points, which is 2% of 21,000, you have to add up whatever the units you are times whatever the points they're allowed based on the type of unit. That's my understanding.
That's correct.
And then as you add units, you're adding, you're increasing the denominator. So it might be a little harder to get to the, you can't, the denominator is the total, the 21,000 goes up as you add units as well. So that's kind of stretches it out a little bit.
You, you are correct. The, the, in order, in order to achieve exemption completely, it's 10% of your total number of housing units, regardless of the type of unit, as is in the moratorium calculus, it's just a flat out 10% of your total number of housing units have to be deed restricted. And yes, for every project that's built, and the number of housing units increases, it's adding to that denominator. It's based on the, the next, you know, we will have in, in several years, the results of the 2020 census, but it's based on the last decennial census. So that, that denominator will move, but it only moves every 10 years. But, but let's, let's be candid. I, I don't know that it's realistic to think that we will achieve 10% step. Because, you know, just if, if every single project that was ever built going forward has 30% deed restricted units, we would need to build over 8,000 additional housing units to, to make that math work.
Right.
So.
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
The same concept of the denominator expanding also applies though to the, to the moratorium target, right? Just it doesn't affect you as much.
It, it, well, it does, but again, that target only moves every 10 years. It, it doesn't move, so it's only, it's based on the last decennial census. So we're still using the 2010 number, which is 21648, until we have a new number from the 2020 census, which won't be for several years.
Right. And, and bear in mind also that we do get a quarter of a point for each market rate unit in the set aside development, right? So there is some credit for the other units that are in the, in the overall housing structure, in the, in the affordable housing structure. Okay?
Thank you.
Okay, good. Anyone else, questions on these topics? Yes, Commissioner Levy.
So I'm clear. Does the 2% of points apply to be eligible for a moratorium? And the 10% for a permanent exemption? Is that correct or?
That's correct.
So at 433 points, we could apply for a moratorium? Or if we ever achieve 2,164 units, we would be exempt, period?
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? I'm looking for hands of commissioners or just unmute and chime in. Okay, it looks like we're, anyone?
Yeah, just a quick, quick question about subsequent moratorium. So are there limitations on the number of years that they can, they can be? And how, how are they qualified for?
Subsequent moratorium would be based on a slightly lesser threshold for communities as ours is. It was a recent amendment for, that have greater than 20,000 housing units. It's 326 points for subsequent moratorium. So that would be 326 points in addition to the 433 that would qualify for, in the second moratorium, is for a five year period. So if either after achieving a four year moratorium or during that time, if other projects that are, are in that approved and under construction or approved but not yet built column get built, you know, there'd be another, you know, slug of points that we could attribute towards a potential moratorium, 326. Now, it doesn't, this might be a little confusing, but if, if we achieve moratorium status, that doesn't prevent projects from being reviewed and approved. If the commission thought they were worthy projects, it just exempts you from the 8-30G appeals process for that four years. So what some towns have done is because, especially towns with very low threshold points, is they'll have, you know, achieve a four year moratorium. And then, you know, you do one project with your housing authority that achieves enough points for a smaller town within that four years, you know, could be enough to qualify for that subsequent five year moratorium. So it, it doesn't prevent the commission from considering projects. It just exempts you from the appeals process during the time of the moratorium.
Right.
Sorry, go ahead. Now, Commissioner Berman.
Sorry, technical point, the, the 433 points for an initial moratorium have to be achieved within a certain time period. Cause as I understand it, we already have, say, 2.5% of our housing stock affordable. That's not nearly the 10% that's required. But when do the 433 points need to, to be achieved, within what timeframe?
There's not a, there's not an endpoint timeframe that you need to achieve those points within. It's just you can't reach back before the adoption of the statute to take credit. And this is part of the frustrating thing for us is, you know, Fairfield has a handful of projects that were done long before the statute existed that we don't get to take credit for because those projects didn't occur post statute. So it's kind of the opposite. There's no deadline to apply. There's just a starting point at which you can't credit projects that happened before that time.
Very clear, thank you.
Commissioner Newton.
Thank you. Jim, with respect to the comment you had made just a moment ago about being able to consider 830G projects if we make the moratorium, but get exempted from the, the appeal standard. If, earlier you said, I think if all the 206 in development were, got the COs, we would get a moratorium or be eligible for a moratorium, assuming it was approved?
Yes.
If we're approved for a moratorium, let's just say a year from now, and there are pending 830Gs at the time, do we get the more, do that moratorium apply to those pending projects that have already been applied for, maybe even on appeal? Or does it only apply to new projects that have been submitted after we get the moratorium?
It would be, it would be the latter. The statute is very clear that any project that either has been submitted to you and maybe not even yet gone to hearing, or have already been approved or under appeal, any application that's in the door prior to the effective date of a moratorium gets to proceed under the, under the statute. They're not exempt, we wouldn't be exempt from the appeal process for any application that's already been submitted prior to the effective date of the moratorium.
Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Corcoran.
So just following up on the, the units built before 830G went into effect, for the cities, Bridgeport and Hartford and so on, that have greater than 10%. Do they get to count those pre, those pre-statured units? I mean, these are units that are not deed restricted, I guess.
No, there, there, it's the same for all the municipalities. So units that were deed restricted prior do not, do not count.
So the cities have 10% deed restricted units, hosts?
Most of them have more than that. Most of them have, you know, 15, 18, 20%.
But these are all deed restricted and built after 830G?
Correct.
Yeah, there's, there's, there's different levels of definitions of housing that, that count towards those credit points. For the most part, what we've been dealing with are what's defined as a set aside development, which is a development that sets aside 30%, at least 30%. There are other categories of assisted housing that are typically projects that have other governmental assistance that are usually either 100% affordable or affordable at much steeper or deeper levels of, of income than, than what 8-30G sets at 80% or 40%. There's a lot of assisted housing for folks that make, you know, far less than that, 20%, 30% that get higher credit numbers in some of those state or federally funded, what's defined as an assisted housing project. So that's where some of those, you know, the point totals get, get higher for some of those municipalities.
Got it. Thank you.
Good. All right. So let's move up now into the spreadsheet of projects and.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm just going to walk you through a couple, just to show the distinction. I'm not going to go through all of this, but if you look at the, obviously, the, the status column about two thirds of the way across is what I want to call your attention to. So the first one, two, three, four, five projects there are approved projects. And you can see the calculus for three of those are inclusionary projects, meaning they weren't 8-30G projects. They were projects that met the requirement of our regulations that if you've, if you've got more than 10 units, you're required to set aside 10% as inclusionary units. The top two are not under construction, obviously, and well, none of those actually are under construction yet. But for example, 219 Ash Creek Boulevard is a metro center project, 357 units. 10% of those, or 36 units are going to be deed restricted for below market rate. So if all of those are constructed, that project would achieve 54 housing unit equivalency points. You know, obviously, the set aside units get more if you look at the next project, you know, 980 High Street, which obviously, you know, I understand it doesn't have a wetlands approval yet. So that's, that's a project that's been approved through this commission, but not yet gone forward. But 40 units, eight of which at market rate, at various levels of income, that would, that project, if completed, would be 70.5 housing unit equivalency points. So that's the distinction. There are many that are in this list that are, are done, that this, this commission, there are some that are owner deed restricted or permanent supportive housing that we weren't necessarily involved with, but, but for the fact that they're restricted, we get those credit points. If you can scroll up just a little bit, Emily.
What is the, what is the red on the, on the right most side?
Yeah, the red, and I discussed this with Mark, the red are points. For example, those units, Jarvis Court Garden, those permanent supportive housing units, right now, don't have the level of, if, if, if they were tweaked to achieve a, a deeper level of affordability through a deed restriction, which Mark believes to be achievable, they would achieve a higher level of point calculation, which is shown in the right most column. The red because it hasn't been implemented yet, but it's projected to be achievable.
What timeframe?
Oh, well, again, the superb, the permanent supportive housing units, for the most part, on that list are owned and operated by Operation Hope. So it, it would, that could be a pretty quick turnaround for those units. The wild card is 15 Pine Tree Lane. This is really not anything that need to be changed, but there is, there is likely to be some dispute as to what the total. as to what the total number of housing unit equivalency points would be there because that was a project that had 38 existing units. It was completely demolished and 50 units were constructed, new units that were no longer age restricted. So they get the family unit credit points at a higher rate. We believe that it would be equitable since they were in such a dilapidated condition and built before eight dash 30G. Since if that was a complete demolition, that all 50 units should be credited. There's a possibility that the state might take the position that only the net increase of 12 units gets credited. So that's why that figure is in red.
Okay.
Just, I just wanted to take a look at the co, couple more down. You see in the status column, it's C O N S, that means it's under construction. So comp means it's a completed project. The three projects that are under construction that add up to those 44 and a half points that Commissioner Braun asked about a little while ago. Those three projects are 333 Uncle Road, which was the Knights of Columbus Inclusionary Project. 10% of those units are going to be set aside, so nine units would achieve 13 and a half points. Alto Fairfield is the new name for what I refer to as Trademark Two. Again, an inclusionary project that will have 16 units credited at 24 points. And 1675 Post Road, which was a set-aside development eight dash 30G that's nearing completion, would garner seven points. So those three projects that will be in the near term or nearer term completed would add 44 and a half points to the, you know, CO'd and completed, leaving 47 points remaining to get to 433 points. So I don't want to go through every line item here, but if you have any questions, I just wanted to explain what, what, you know, how you would go across and look at those points.
Very, very, very helpful. What does delay on?
Delay, that's one prior, one, that only applies to one project. It's the, it's 427, 1427, 1443 Kings Highway. We say delay there because the commission approved a 24-unit project, but subsequently, the owners decided they didn't think that they could go forward with it and actually made an application for a different project, which was a mixed-use ground floor commercial, second floor residential with only four units that wasn't, wouldn't be credited at all. We put it in the spreadsheet to capture the fact that it was a development under eight dash 30G that the commission approved, and it's the applicant that has decided so far not to proceed.
Okay. We have no reason to believe that any of the projects other than that, which we have been, which, which have been approved, are somehow being abandoned by the developers, though. We, we, we have every...
No, the, yeah, the only one that we think is, is probably not going to happen or likely not to happen is that one that's listed as delay. The others, we don't have strong information to, to say that it's not going to happen.
Okay.
The last, the last column under status is proposed. And these are not projects proposed. And perhaps 92140 Bronson Road should be changed to approved, if you will, because the court proceedings on that have been resolved. So perhaps that should change its status. But the others, and as well as, you know, 131 Beach Road is an ongoing application that, that we're involved with. 528 Black Rock Turnpike is an application that we're going to go to a public hearing with on, on August the 11th. The other projects, a couple of them are fairly large on Black Rock Turnpike, are projects that have not, are not formal applications anywhere. They just have had some initial inquiry and application to the Water Pollution Control Authority to review sewer capacity, but those aren't projects that are formal submittals. We just happen to know about them through their submittal to the sewer, sewer commission known formally as the Water Pollution Control Authority.
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, again, it's a snapshot view, just to kind of see where the points are. If anybody subsequent to this meeting has any questions about that, after you've had a chance to look at it in more detail, please reach out to either myself or Mark, who I, again, credit to Mark and his office for preparing this document. He was good enough to share it and I can explain it and walk through it, but I don't want to take credit for this work. This is, this is Mark's work.
Of course, of course. And, you know, look, the, the Mark and his, his, his office, you know, does a lot of work in, in, you know, following all of this and coordinating it and, and, you know, so definitely appreciate all of those efforts. So, you know, to both the commissioners as well as members of the public, you know, who have questions that, you know, our town offices are available for any questions about any of this material. Both Mr. Went, Ms. Harris, Mr. Barnhart are available to talk about, answer questions about the statute generally, our community, and where these points lie and what's been built, what's proposed, any of the details that are in any of these projects that are listed in, in the spreadsheet. So.
One question?
Yes, Commissioner Francis.
528 Black Rock Turnpike is where?
It's at the corner of Castle Avenue. Castle Avenue is a street that runs parallel to Kings Highway that runs behind Miller Nissan, if you know. So it's, it's, it's the first intersection going north from the exit 24 Rotary.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions on the overall spreadsheet and the, you know, the, the way the data is presented here? Yes, Commissioner Braun.
So so right now, the points built or occupied, we have 341. In development, meaning approved or under construction and are, and/or under construction, 206. So those, what we have now and what's already approved exceeds the 433. Those two numbers add up to 547, right? So without any more approvals, we've already satisfied the moratorium. However, until they're built and with the CFO and the other requirement, the deed, I assume the deed's already been recorded, but whatever. Until that happens, they don't count. So anything else is still subject eight dash 30G.
Correct.
Correct, yes. Unless and until the effective date of a moratorium approved by the State Department of Housing.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, hearing that. I want to thank, oh, I'm getting some feedback. If you're not talking, please mute. Thank you. I want to thank Mr. Went for taking the time to gather the materials and coordinate with Mr. Barnhart and, you know, getting with me to present all of this today. I hope that it's been helpful for you, members of the commission, as well as members of the public that are here participating with us. So thanks. Mr., yes, Commissioner Braun. No, you, sorry.
I'm so sorry. I just thought of this. Do we know that every, would we know about every deed restricted unit? Like, would it necessarily be known to Mark? Or could there be some out there that he doesn't know about? I can't imagine anyone restricting without...
No.
Without him knowing, but...
I don't think it's credible that there are deed restricted units that have not been counted. It is very well-known that there are units out there that otherwise qualify but for the fact that they are not deed restricted. All right? There is an effort, there is an effort to identify. And as Mr. Went explained, try to create incentive for those owners to deed restrict. But that is a work in progress.
Thank you.
Okay. So then I'll turn it back over to Mr. Went, Ms. Harris, to the P O C D, Dust Off.
All right, I did, I did appreciate the opportunity to walk through that. Mr. Chairman, again, my thanks to Mr. Barnhart for his continued close collaboration. So I'm going to turn things over to Ms. Harrigan for a recap of the, it's been a while, this was a post-COVID world in which we had these workshops, which were greatly attended. We got some great feedback and I'll let Emmeline walk you through that. And again, it may be helpful to reduce your participants page in order to see the full slides. So I will turn it over to Emmeline at this point.
Thanks, Jim. So we do have quite a bit of a recap to do. I know that it's been quite a long time. I just wanted to very, very briefly just recap what the plan of conservation and development is. So, you know, this is our primary document that identifies our land use goals and policies for both economic development, natural resource protection and conservation. Keep in mind that the plan of conservation and development is a great grant source tool. So identifying projects and best practices consistent with the policies certainly help fund additional action items for our plan of conservation and development. It also can identify future planning studies needed consistent with policy. So part of our outreach was really to kind of get a sense and a temperature for how people feel about different goals and policies moving forward. Sometimes the plan of conservation and development doesn't answer all those things, but it can, because it discusses some of those, can, can identify how to move forward with a, with a planning study, for example, especially for transportation-based goals and policies that are identified. The other thing that a, a plan of conservation and development can do is it can really inform future regulation in terms of, you know, if we're kind of getting the temperature of how people feel about accessory apartments and our current regulations, do we need to expand them? You know, while it doesn't, by its adoption, change those regulations, it certainly sets the foundation for looking, looking towards a regulation change. What a plan of conservation and development is not is it isn't specific regulations. So, you know, we still need our zoning regulations that are supported by the policy work that's done by our P O C D. Also, for the most part, a P O C D should be fairly broad and not specific to sites, unless we're specifically identifying, you know, future planning areas, acquisition targets or other sites that might need large-scale funding, like if you had significant brownfields that may be good targets for grant applications. The P O C D is also not our primary enforcement document. That still falls to the zoning regulations. So as, as each of you recall, we're so thankful that all of our commissioners participated in our winter workshops. These, at this point, were six months ago. So if you kind of think back, this was the end of January, the beginning of February, pre-COVID, pre-racial social awareness that's going on in terms of, you know, major shifts. And I think what's happening globally and locally. I also believe that, you know, some of the things that were discussed within these workshops may really be kind of reemphasized through quarantine and, you know, this, this larger emphasis on local assets. You know, what are people using in their neighborhoods? What do they need in their neighborhoods? So, you know, some of, some of what the last six months has kind of brought to us may, may actually help, you know, move some of these policy objectives forward. As a reminder, we focused the winter workshops on several kind of blocks. So the first block was a conservation block. And we asked specific targeted questions to help facilitate the discussion. So under conservation, we ask people to think about future acquisition targets. We also ask people to discuss their existing open space areas and whether there are enhancements needed. You know, for example, changes in the way that people need to use the space that we have. Also identify future greenways for people and habitat. And then also coastal conservation goals. Next, under economic development and housing, you know, with the understanding that, you know, 95% of our land area is zoned residential, how do we, and what, what does the general population feel comfortable with in terms of maximizing commercial opportunities within our existing commercially zoned areas? The other thing that we ask people to do is, you know, with kind of changes in how people are living, the, the desire for more walkable communities, were there areas where we needed to contemplate new village commercial districts? So we did ask people to kind of put their thinking caps on and really think about where they might be comfortable with kind of a small neighborhood scale introduction of commercial space. The other thing that we asked was understanding, again, that for a lot of people, the, the pre-existing single-family neighborhoods are, are fairly sacred. We also asked people to think about diversifying housing in commercial corridors. What would they be comfortable with? Could we increase the density a little bit, understanding that, you know, mixed-use projects are commercial just like anything else and, you know, contribute to the grand list greatly. We also, based on prior inquiries that we'd gotten in the office, wanted people to think about accessory apartments. Fairfield does have existing accessory apartment regulations, but, you know, we have kind of heard through different groups within the community that maybe it was time to think about expanding how we allow these, especially on larger lots. So that was part of the discussion as well. Our last kind of major focus area was for infrastructure. And we asked a couple of targeted questions, one of which was multimodal transportation. How do people feel about what's available within Fairfield? Do they feel like we need to expand multimodal opportunities? In conjunction with that, where are those safety hotspots related to transportation with all the modes? You know, vehicle, whether there's pedestrian hotspots that require better safety implementations, those type of things. We also talked about needed community infrastructure and facilities or enhancements to existing facilities. And then lastly, we talked about discussing future sea level rise and resiliency as is required by state statute. So as we go through kind of the feedback of what people discussed, we're going to go through it in this same order in terms of conservation, economic development, housing, and then infrastructure. So with conservation, our residents in Fairfield were generally very supportive of conservation efforts, both past and, you know, looking forward. Residents did feel like, you know, we, we certainly don't have an acquisition line that's contributed to on a regular basis outside of, I think, land use processes like with subdivisions and, and things like that. So I think there was concern that, you know, open space acquisition is generally a good thing, but, you know, how does that happen? I think they felt like more data would be appropriate in terms of, you know, a vacant land map to kind of figure out where the best acquisition opportunities were. And, you know, maybe we could use new technologies to kind of figure that out. One of the things that came out in, in multiple sections, and keeping in mind that sometimes conservation overlaps economic development, sometimes overlaps infrastructure, that there were some unifying, I think, themes across all three of these sectors. And one of which was, and it's maybe exacerbated by kind of our, our own personal COVID-19 experiences, is that we need more bike paths, both nat, night, natural bike paths in our open space areas and generally. Residents and, you know, people who, I think, tend to volunteer with conservation groups regionally and locally, felt very strongly that we should support our ASPATU, our, our local... ASPATU, our, our local, uh, regional nonprofit in the arc, in the acquisition targets that they identified. Um, and also that, you know, the Mill River being one of our primary assets within the community, that we should continue to monitor and improve, uh, the Mill River itself. Um, kayaking access was mentioned several times, um, in terms of identifying, um, you know, that as a, a town, um, that should be a town amenity, that's, that's more, uh, openly available and, um, you know, publicly, um, available in terms of the information as to where to do that. And then also, uh, for the Sasko River, um, you know, clean, general cleanup for that. Additionally, I think there were some maintenance comments for some of the properties, and I'm not going to go through all of those. Uh, we are going to make the presentation obviously available both to come, to the commission and to the general public after the presentation. But just wanted to kind of, uh, focus on the conservation map that was used as part of the workshop. Um, you can see that, um, the east side of town doesn't have as much, for lack of better, terminology, green space. Um, so there were quite a few comments about the east side of town, um, both needing more parklets and kind of more contiguous open space opportunities. Um, you know, the two, uh, rather large open spaces that are shown on the east side of town are private golf courses, uh, or sorry, a public golf course and a private golf course. Um, and while that may need meet some of the open space recreation needs of some, there was definitely concern that the east side of town, um, both in terms of the Rooster River, which is, um, you know, there's a lot of open space opportunities along the Mill River, but a lot of the Rooster River is held in, uh, private ownership. So, uh, the east side of town doesn't have that same, uh, water amenity that's available to, uh, folks who live along the Mill River. Um, so that was, um, part of what was discussed. In addition, expanding Gold Manor, um, and then also, uh, improving public assets, access and management of the old, um, landfill and marsh. Um, connecting open spaces was mentioned multiple times, um, and, uh, whether it's through, um, greenways, other connections, both pedestrian and, uh, via, um, uh, bicycles. So there was definitely a sense that, um, and I'm sure it's, again, um, even felt more strongly, uh, during, you know, cut, some of the quarantine and, and, uh, COVID restrictions, that, you know, people need an independent way to get from point A to point B, um, in order to more fully enjoy the open space and recreation areas that we have. Uh, we do have to mention a very, um, a, a portion about agriculture within the state statute. And so what residents said about that is that they wanted to target, um, some of the current privately-held spaces to continue those as agricultural, um, assets for the community, such as Foley Pastures, um, develop a community farm at Hoyden's Hill, and, uh, promote and provide more community garden sites, um, as well as pollinator pathways. Pollinator pathways came up, uh, repeatedly. For coastal conservation goals, um, there was a sense, and I think this is one that's universally held in, in a lot of coastal communities, that, um, you know, it would be great to be able to connect beaches and to better improve pedestrian access, um, and also to ensure that, uh, the coastal resources that are available are maintained and clean. Um, and, uh, within the conservation discussion, there was a sense that, um, you know, they did want to maintain a natural coastline versus hardening, as well as, uh, some mention for boardwalks over marshes. For economic development, um, a- and I will, uh, preface this by saying that Jim and I really did kind of set it up, uh, in the discussions to really kind of focus people, um, in thinking about the fact that, you know, we don't have much commercial area to work with. Um, how do we maximize, um, the commercial areas that we have, um, with the understanding that, you know, people still felt that it needed to represent, uh, Fairfield's character? Um, so definitely, uh, people felt that more commercial vitality was, uh, needed, um, that extending streets, streetscapes in certain areas such as King's Highway to Commerce, Commerce Drive area would, um, help to revitalize, uh, in particular, that area. Reexamine the Post Road between downtown and, and Southport. Um, you know, obviously, a, a portion of that is not commercially zoned. So, you know, looking at some of those areas to decide, um, whether, and I'm looking at the, um, Southport Station and Village and Post Road, um, whether to continue some of those, um, commercial corridors more specifically, uh, would be something that would be warranted. Uh, promote hotel use within town, uh, rooftop, uh, bar and dining, um, more vertical development with housing fronting, uh, fronting streets for the mixed-use areas, um, and also increase the density of commercial development downtown north of the Post Road. But, you know, people felt strongly that we needed to have design standards when doing that. And there was also some mention of, um, the Marina and/or Penfield Pavilion, uh, a few times within the feedback about whether or not, uh, the town should support, um, additional restaurant uses at either of those locations. And that was about that. Um, per state statute, we are required to also include mention of, uh, transit-oriented development opportunities within our community. And of course, you know, our recent T O D study, um, really covered a lot of that. But, um, we did, we did in the workshops kind of ask people, um, you know, specifically in terms of the downtown train station, you know, what's, what's their appetite for, um, additional development there? Uh, with our T O D study, uh, we really focused on, um, the Metro Center Station area, uh, and the surrounding, um, neighborhood around that, uh, both to the north and, um, surrounding, uh, Commerce Drive. But I think, uh, the workshop in terms of asking T O D questions really helped, uh, folks express how they felt about downtown. Um, I think people do kind of look at the big parking lot and they do wonder whether or not a downtown parking, uh, deck would be a better idea, um, so that a portion of that lot could be used for something else. Uh, some of the comments included, um, promoting development of an air rights project at the downtown train station, um, parking deck with hotel and residential at downtown railroad station. Um, also, this would help focus some of the downtown parking, um, to make it public. Um, and again, encourage more opportunity for multifamily around, uh, the downtown train station. There was also a comment, and I put it under both categories, because there was a sense that, um, we need to also, uh, identify gateway properties, um, into, uh, Fairfield generally. So, um, you know, that could be via the train stations. It could be via the Easterly entrance into Fairfield, the Westerly entrance into Fairfield, um, and, and also some other areas. So that's something to kind of think about. In terms of Fairfield Metro, um, again, that, that extension of street scape improvements, um, to extend the Metro, um, Center Station area, um, a bit. Uh, we also got a comment for, uh, Geriatric Hospital with Related Services at Fairfield Metro, uh, remediate, uh, Handy and Harmon, and then also a request for additional E V charging stations, um, at both train stations, at all train stations. Um, the other thing, uh, that folks, um, tended to, to talk about in terms of commercial were, not just kind of, um, where commercial areas were, but also in terms of, uh, the vitality for more pop-up events. Uh, for example, people mentioned it'd be nice to have more, uh, food truck areas, um, such as the beach and at the train station. Um, consider a pop-up summer restaurant at the South Benson Marina. Uh, they also, I think, felt like some of the large parking lots that we have in town could facilitate some pop-up experiences. And then, um, also, um, at the Audubon, and then, uh, one of the residents mentioned it'd be nice to have a community stage. It was very clear that, um, residents in Fairfield feel strongly about, um, the commercial development being pedestrian-friendly. Um, there was some response to the fact that, uh, Black Rock Turnpike is not very pedestrian-friendly. Um, and they felt like, um, there's an opportunity, uh, within our regulations to, um, create a more pedestrian-friendly commercial environment. Um, again, there was comments about linkages, uh, within bike-ped corridors for commercial areas. Several people mentioned form-based codes, which is, um, not regulating by use, but regulating by the, the built environment that you want to see. Um, and then there were folks who, uh, were, uh, supportive of looking at, um, a commercial village up north, so somewhere near S H U and G E. Um, there were also folks who were even supportive of additional little neighborhood-designed district pockets, uh, near the Hi Ho. And then also, um, folks who, um, you know, kind of wondered whether, uh, a little commercial, more commercial slash residential opportunities might be available, uh, to contemplate at the Greenfield Village Center. Um, there was a sense that, um, you know, lower Black Rock Turnpike, um, kind of ends abruptly in terms of the commercial development, and maybe there was a way to kind of, uh, connect with, uh, the other commercial development that's further down. Uh, there was a mention a couple of times for additional farmers' markets, uh, in particular at Sherman Green. Within the economic development discussion, we did also, um, have maps where we asked people to, uh, talk about affordable housing and expansion of housing opportunities. And we did, um, uh, of course, focus some of this, this discussion on accessory apartments and how people felt about expanding our regulations. Um, and what residents said almost wholeheartedly was that they do support, um, diversifying housing in several different ways. Many residents support allowing detached accessory dwelling units, particularly on the larger lot areas of town, such as the triple-A area, which is predominantly Greenfield Hill, and the double-A area, which is, um, adjacent to Greenfield Hill and the northerly parts of, uh, Southport. Um, so there was definite, definite support amongst, um, Fairfield residents, regarding detached accessory dwelling units. The other thing that, um, folks discussed is whether or not there's a way to support cluster housing, uh, pocket development surrounded by, uh, green space. Again, Greenfield Hill came up. Um, and whether or not it might be possible to allow smaller, multiple tiny homes on one lot. I think there was this sense, uh, from some of the groups who, who, um, were kind of trying to be creative and talk about different housing opportunities, particularly for seniors, um, younger singles and veterans, that was that, um, you know, maybe there was an alternative to apartment buildings. Uh, and I think they were trying to kind of, um, feel through how they felt about what some of those alternatives might be, such as small cluster housing developments or, um, accessory dwelling units. Uh, the other thing that we, um, uh, heard from residents was that the X side site, uh, is a primary target for mixed-use development, um, including, uh, housing, uh, potentially condos. The other site that was brought up was potentially Sportplex. Uh, and I don't know whether they, um, they meant, I wasn't there for, uh, that particular discussion at the tables, but I'm not sure whether they meant, uh, where the rec departments currently located, um, or whether they were specifically, uh, talking about the Sportplex site. Definitely, people felt very comfortable with residential over commercial and near-transit areas. People also felt like more mixed-use residential on King's Highway was appropriate, um, in the Black Rock Turnpike area, um, to, to, um, to North Avenue with affordable units, um, and that it was, um, positive to increase residential density in downtown areas. With any discussion about housing, uh, we also had several concerns about retaining existing neighborhood character. Um, not surprising, I'm sure, for most of the commissioners. But, you know, I think there was a sense that the east side is certainly dense enough. Um, and so there were some comments like, uh, reduced density near McKinley School. Uh, beach area was certainly, um, people had sensitivities towards, um, some of the larger housing that's been developed over the last, uh, several years. And so I think there was a sense that, you know, if it was possible to increase setbacks and reduce some of the height in the beach area, um, that would be something, uh, that people would feel, protect some of the neighborhood character. Residents also felt like the town should be more aggressive to fund affordable housing, um, in response to some of the 830G applications that have kind of come our way. Uh, they also felt like, um, the town should consider a policy for Airbnbs, um, that, you know, some of the Airbnbs have been fairly impactful in, uh, some of the residential neighborhoods. Two-family and multifamily dwellings, uh, folks felt like they should have single-family character. Um, and then, um, you know, there, I think, again, this is in the beach area, there had concerns about, um, some of the new two-family construction. So there, there was also mention about, um, some of the group homes and concern about that. And then, um, wanting to limit density in the floodplain as pertained to, um, detached accessory apartments and, um, you know, some of the duplexes that have recently been constructed there. There was definitely a, a sense that, um, and again, I think this goes back to the accessory dwelling units and the, um, cluster housing and tiny housing that, um, the, the new home construction by the beach is great and where older homes are being, um, torn down, but it, it leaves a hole in our housing stock for, uh, folks who need smaller options. And, you know, that there was a sense that, uh, the town should be creative and thinking about, um, how we might be able to incentivize some of that smaller, single-family, um, dwelling sizes that are, um, as houses are reaching their lifespan, um, we might be able to reintroduce some of that. And then lastly, there was a comment about placing, uh, senior housing on the S H U G E site. Um, our next, um, block of conversation was about infrastructure. And so this was a fairly expansive, um, conversation, because we started with, um, drainage infrastructure, utilities, and then also, um, sewer capacity. Um, and for the most part, I think that, uh, residents, probably based upon some of the recent large storms that we've had, really felt like the storm drain capacity needs to be increased within their, our community, um, to help deal with some of the intense weather that we've been seeing. This comes up a lot, I think, in a lot of communities about burying utility lines, especially with telephone poles being a bit unsightly. Um, and then, um, there was, uh, there were several comments about wanting better online access to town services. And, um, I think in the, in the COVID-19 environment, the town has done a pretty good job at pivoting, but, uh, it's certainly shown, at least to town employees, where we can improve on the, the work that we've done rather quickly. Um, and then there was a comment that, uh, when utility companies come into town to, um, do work within our community, that they do a better job of leaving, um, roads in a better condition when they, uh, when they do repair work to the roadways. Uh, for sewer service, it was a little bit mixed. Um, I think there were a couple of comments where people really felt like we needed to upgrade the sewer capacity in town, um, and expand sewers town-wide. Um, although that, you know, the reality of that might be a bit cost prohibitive. So within, um, infrastructure, we talk about transportation a lot, and I'm not, I'm not going to read all of these, I will just summarize, um, that town residents, um, wholeheartedly reinforced, I think, what our feelings were, before we even had the workshops, that we were getting a lot of chatter that, uh, mu- multimodal mobility matters greatly to Fairfielders. Running the gamut from, um, bus and transit amenities, um, better pedestrian connections, better bike connections, and I'm sure that this has only been exacerbated by the COVID-19 environment. In terms of transit, you know, there were a couple of, uh, very strong comments that, you know, maybe we could do a better job of coordinating with existing shuttle services provided by the universities, um, that could open those up, um, to residents as well. There was definitely a sense that bus access needs to be a little bit better, and that we have all of these great amenities. and that we have all of these great amenities, but, you know, some of them take a motor vehicle to get from point A to point B. So there was definitely a sense that if we could figure out some way to have better inter-town trolley, tram, or shuttle service, that would be better for Fairfield residents. In terms of pedestrian connections, people really talked about linking the three train stations for pedestrian and bikes. Definitely more sidewalks and bike paths, and people got very specific. I'm not going to call out the list, but there is a list within this section that talks about areas where people felt that there were deficiencies. There was a comment to make Sanford and Miller Streets pedestrian only in the downtown area. One of the things that came up repeatedly were the railroad crossings, underpasses, that these are real hazards for our pedestrians within our community, that there's no way to go from north-south in a way that is safe, given the constraints of those underpass choke points. So more sidewalks, more crosswalks, more safety for people out there walking. The same could be said for the bike connections and amenities. I think people felt like if there's room, dedicated bike lanes was, were definitely the safest way to go, especially with more visible pavement and markings. The connections to the train were very important in terms of, you know, hoping that people could bike to train stations instead of taking a car. Connections to the beach and from open space to open space were also very important to town residents. A couple of other categories that were mentioned, again, the large parking lots downtown were were really something that folks said, maybe it's time to think about a parking structure and a parking garage, that, you know, these large parking lots downtown are not as desirable to the downtown area. So there was some discussion about that. Rail improvements were discussed, including, again, those underpasses, both in terms of drainage and access, travel time on Metro North. And also, you know, this sense that within town, it would be great if we could negotiate Metro North fare reductions between Fairfield and Fairfield Metro is a way to eliminate people's need to drive between those two areas. You know, especially because we're building so much housing over by Fairfield Metro. But, you know, a lot of the really great vital commercial activity is still in downtown. Electric vehicles and charging stations were also discussed by several residents and comments for better infrastructure for both travel and charging were mentioned. And then we had several folks list roadway improvement suggestions and hotspots, as well as design considerations. People felt like more streetscape median planting would make the roadways more attractive. And there was a need for more signage in certain locations, as well as, again, connections between certain desirable points of travel. There's, let's see, promoting commercial lot connectivity and interconnections, people felt very strongly about. And that has come up a lot in terms of some of the safety studies that we've done recently, especially on Black Rock Turnpike, where there's too many driveway entrances in and out that disrupt the pedestrian environment, and some other traffic safety considerations in terms of traffic calming. In terms of community facilities, the Fairfield Armory Site was a large topic of consideration and conversation by many. They really feel like we shouldn't let the Turner Reserve Center pass us by, that that really has opportunity to become a a new recreation center for Fairfield. Also has potential to include senior activities, as well as a new community center in a more central location. And then also, people really, 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 really want an indoor/outdoor town pool. So that was suggested as a location where that might be a possibility. There was also mention of needing a place for veterans and that the Turner Reserve Center might be a good location for that to occur. There were also several kind of buckets of discussion within community facilities. People did really feel like there had been a large period of deferred maintenance for town facilities and schools, and that there needs to be a renewed focus on, for example, repairing some of the town hall facilities, such as Old Town Hall, the Par Three Golf Course. There was some mention about maintenance of the library and needing a cafe at the library, and some of the open spaces needing a little bit more care. Invest in ACs for the schools. Some of the large street trees are aging out, and they require replacement. Better park maintenance generally, and then developing a best practice schedule for town maintenance overall. In terms of the beach and water access facilities, there were mixed results. Some people felt like, oh, we don't really need to add a restaurant or a pool at the marina. Some people felt very strongly that we could have a restaurant and a bar at some of the beach facilities that we have right now, such as the Marina or Penfield Pavilion. The Jennings Beach Concession Stand needed updating. And then, of course, kayak access was, was mentioned, as well as paddleboard access. And then also a dog park mentioned at the Marina Open Space. Additional recreation facility comments included a couple of mentions of needing a more robust teen center presence, either at the rec department or at the Beanery. And then also, there were some comments such as perhaps moving the school bus depot to Grassmere Ave across Whole Foods, trying to look at university partnership strategies for additional recreation opportunities. Mentions of a pool again, dog parks, at community garden sites. And folks felt that the YMCA should needs a renovation. And then there was mention of a temporary ice rink at the golf course. Finally, we're, we just have a couple more topics within the conversation, but first day statue, we are required to discuss sea level rise and Yukon's present sea level rise scenario. And the, the comments were fairly diverse. So people did feel like, you know, we really need to reemphasize safe evacuation routes. We may need to, in some areas, think about selective retreat. We may need to think about natural solutions. At the time that we had done the workshop, it had, it was about a year, year and a half after we had the big September 2018 rains, so people were more focused on what to do about Rooster River flooding. So, you know, they were talking about what relationship we could develop to help address some of the Rooster River flooding issues regionally with Bridgeport and Trumbull. With some of the sea level rise discussion, there was a sense that in order to implement any sea level rise resiliency solutions, funding needed to be available from a local source, whether it was just a fund where there's contributions made in, or a special tax district to pay for some flood measures. Flood measures were talked about, both in terms of natural flood measures and also more constructed flood measures, such as bulkheads and pump systems. But there was a sense that, you know, they, they do want to protect dunes along the shoreline, reclaim beach areas where possible, and that we should, at the very least, move or protect critical town facilities. But it was really kind of a balanced conversation about how to protect our national, natural resources, but also institute some structural solutions. The other part of what we discussed had to do with sustainability. Fairfield participates within the Sustainable CT program. And in this last, not this last cycle, but the cycle before, Fairfield had the highest score of any community in terms of the actions that we promote locally and the regulations that we institute locally that help support sustainable actions. These include compact land use patterns, such as our TOD areas, transportation alternatives, open space areas, and protecting habitat areas, as well as focusing on resiliency and supporting our local agricultural community. So we did ask people to provide us comments about sustainability, and people felt like limiting paved areas on residential properties helps to support some of the, helps make us more resilient. Also, expanding recycling center to include food waste, adding an arts council, upgrading our stormwater system, electric car incentives, possibly looking at electric school buses, further cleanup of the Mill River, and then other things that have been mentioned in other sections, such as more small community gardens, promoting pollinator pathways and limiting use of pesticides, particularly on town properties, and then also more community solar throughout the community. We received a little bit of post-workshop POCD correspondence from the Fairfield Forestry Committee, who requested that we incorporate the Community Forest Management Plan Goals and Policies into the POCD, from Fairfield Senior Advocates, supporting more expansive allowances for accessory dwelling units, such as having them detached. Fairfield Sustainable Task Force to request that we integrate some of the newest Sustainable CT Policy objectives into the POCD. And then from a couple of individuals who felt like they just wanted to provide some follow-up in conjunction to the work that they did at the workshops. Individuals felt that higher density in commercial corridors with more robust mixed use was appropriate. Also, suggestion for better use of the town property that actually faces us here at the back of Sullivan Independence Hall, and also faces Penfield Road, that it might be, provide a nice bike pedestrian access to the town hall, museum, campus, and other events. And we also, as part of the workshops, asked people to fill out that small survey that we asked them to pick two additional focus areas where we might be able to have additional meetings, understanding that, you know, we asked them for a lot of information in a very short period of time. And the three that kind of came out on top in terms of the survey were economic development, housing, and open space. Not that there weren't votes for other topics, but those were the three that had the most preferences indicated within the survey. And I realize that was a lot of information in a very short period of time, but that's, that's kind of the, the feedback that we received in the workshops. And just to give you an idea as to our process, Jim and I sat down and kind of meticulously read each of the maps from each of the different tables from each of the different workshop evenings, and we transposed those into a list where we then tried to kind of prioritize some of the feedback areas. So please let me know if you have any questions. And again, all of this will be available on the website.
That's great. No, thank you so much, Ms. Harrigan. That was comprehensive across all of, you know, the different components that we, that we did. And like you said, it's a lot of information, but it was also a lot of, a lot of time and, and energy that went into those sessions. They were really well attended, and we got a lot of really great feedback from, from a lot of residents. What from here is our next step? Where, where, where did we leave off in that timeline and, and collectively, I mean, this is now for discussion. We can certainly talk about, you know, some of the substance of what you just recounted, but collectively, let's, let's talk about next steps. We, we don't anticipate that, or at least I don't anticipate that there's going to be substantial relief from, you know, the restrictions that we're under at the moment. I mean, we could certainly conduct a planning session socially distant, but I think it would be pretty difficult for us to have a socially distant, you know, charrette of local residents coming into Penfield Pavilion again, and, you know, the way that we did those before. But nonetheless, you know, we, we, I think, personal preference, that we resume, you know, our march towards this, this effort and, and culmination of our, of our efforts. I mean, we have really made a lot of progress, and I think we need to, we ought, we ought to map out next steps, notwithstanding, you know, the restrictions that we're faced with. We need to seize the moment, capitalize on, on, you know, the, the fruits of our labor, which, which is substantial. And maybe we won't be able to do everything that we initially had plotted, but, you know, where were we in that timeline? What on that timeline was sort of the next steps and remaining to be done? And, and then, you know, discussion, we need to figure out, or we ought to figure out, you know, where to go from here.
Jim, are you there?
I'm here.
Okay.
I didn't know if you wanted me to take a crack at that, or you wanted to hear other thoughts from, from commissioners, but you know, we've been talking about it a bit. I, I, you know, I would love to have another focused public input session, but I agree with you to, 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 to not, to not have the ability to do that in person, I think, campers us a little bit. We could probably try to get some, maybe creative and some additional surveying on specific topics to tease out maybe a little more detail. We were thinking, you know, I think we've covered, you know, of the, of the three topics that were, got the most votes for more focused meetings, being open space, housing, and economic development. You know, I think we've touched on economic development a bit when we did our TOD planning. So we were thinking leaning towards more of a, a housing discussion and opportunities to talk about, you know, is, is where specifically from a policy standpoint, we might want to go with housing recommendations. And I don't have a solution in terms of, all right, this is where we're going, but we, we need to work on that and come up with a plan. I'd love to have a, a focused kind of group session like we did for the others, but I think I agree, it's going to be harder, harder to do that virtually than, than kind of feeling the, the energy and sitting around the table and sharing, sharing thoughts and ideas like, like previously. So I'm anxious or curious to, to, to hear what other commissioners might have as far as feedback goes, but we do need to, I agree, get back and, and kind of reshape the, the timeline and maybe readjust, given the circumstances of what might be those next steps.
Yep. So and then before I throw it over to, you know, the, the room, do, do we have any understanding of where the Strategic Planning Committee is with their draft and, and?
I do not. I've, I've looked, they, they haven't. I don't know that they've met. I've been looking at their, you know, following their, their minutes. I don't believe they've had a substantive discussion in a while.
All right. Commissioners, does anyone, would anyone like to chime in on, 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 on any of the subject matters we've just talked about? Yes, Commissioner Gordon.
I just would say, if you were to have a meeting, you could do something with breakout groups and smaller groups, because I think that was one of the things, discussions that were, that worked. That was one of the things that worked about the in-meeting is to have smaller discussions, so breakout groups might help with that.
And maybe we, maybe, maybe those breakout groups in smaller, smaller sessions could be, you know, disparate, right? Not all in the same place.
Well, it could be on Zoom, like the, I, I know Zoom has, you can not break out people into their own little rooms.
Oh, so we have a big meeting like this, where there are maybe 50 or even 100 people, but through, through the host and, and such, everyone could sign up for specific breakout session, then it would be more manageable, where you'd have maybe five or seven or Specific breakout session, then it would be more manageable where you'd have maybe five or seven or even ten.
That could be very effective.
Right. And then someone could come back and look for it.
Yeah, yeah. Interesting. Well, I I actually just had a breakout session in a. In a meeting that that we did. And it's funny because, you know, whenever you do that in person. Never goes along as planned, right? Everybody dilly-dallys. They get a cup of coffee and. Even if it's, you know, it's fifteen or twenty minutes and nobody ever comes back on time. On Zoom, you like it or not. It's like it's automatic. Commissioner Raymond, did you have something?
Yeah, I I like the idea of trying to have a public session. On one or more of the topics that got the most interest for having a more focused session. And I think. The idea of, you know, Commissioner Gordon's idea of using breakout rooms in Zoom to try to approximate smaller groups within larger meeting is a good one. You know, we'd have to give some thought as to how to make the best use of the public's time, given the format. But, you know, the the only other alternative would be to try to forge ahead with. These very robust, you know, sets of ideas and suggestions for our P O C D that we got from the, you know, the focus groups before COVID. And perhaps to have our consultant or to, you know. Begin the process of funneling those down into what is ultimately going to make it into the text of the new P O C D. But perhaps there is a way to proceed on both both tracks in parallel. You know, we could. Take what we have, move forward with it in the process, while at the same time trying to plan based on. Public interest in having another session remotely. One or more new focused public session.
Yeah, so so that's excellent suggestion. I think you're you're looking at the face of our illustrious leader.
You're looking at your consultants, right?
We have no consultants.
And so so the funneling, you know, is really. Being handled in-house. I mean, I think I I would generally agree that, given everything that Ms. Harrigan just reviewed. We do have a a wealth of concepts, ideas, visions for the various sectors that, you know, would comprise the. You know, the 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 meat and potatoes of the. Of the P O C D. So. On the the timeline that we had before, what were the next things we would have done? Were they those three, three additional meetings focused on those those areas that residents wanted? See, that was it? Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think we would have had some some similar meetings to what we had in in then from there, we would have start. Probably a drafting process to as funneling some of those issues down, so to speak, and then. And then trying to get feedback from that. So we're going to probably rely heavily on you in that regard to look at drafts and stuff and then perhaps. We go forward if we get, you know, once we've done some of that work, maybe we can do some online, you know, if we do some of these. Online opportunities, as you guys are talking about, we'll consider perhaps built into that. There's opportunities for some, you know, polling. That can be done through all that, too, that we can, we can try.
Okay. All right, well, you know, let's. My vote is in the camp of, you know, we ought to get back on the horse as best we can, whether that horse is in person or or virtual. And we should, we should throw open an invitation to the public for a virtual town meeting. You know, it might might even inspire more participation because people don't have to. Trap, you know, to a place and and they can just, you know, beam in from the comfort of their couch. But and then and then I do like the idea of of then. Breaking that up into, you know, breaking those folks up into breakout sessions. Hopefully to a manageable level where, you know, I mean. I'm getting better at sort of leading this larger group, but I've been on calls where fifteen or twenty people and. I mean, it's it's can get a bit unwieldy, you know? So in any event, you never know until you try. And so, you know, part of this effort is to see whether that that. Would be functional and and productive. And I mean, look, to the extent that we we try and it's not. Productive and we don't get turnout or whatever, then, I mean, so be it. I don't think we'll get, you know, negative, just because we tried.
No, and 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 and. I think it was, it was timely to to kind of recompile all this, and I want to thank Emmeline for her, while it was certainly a collective effort to. Digest and codify all of those things. It was more of a singular effort to put it in a in a, an effective presentation for you tonight. So I thank Emmeline for this, but. But your consulting team will take seriously the charge, now having shared all this data. And to report back of what our recommendations might be for those next steps.
Yeah.
What excellent consulting team we have.
Right. That's, that's good. That's good. All right. Well, I mean, for for me, I mean, that that sounds like the best result here, the next step. And would look forward to that. Does it? Does anyone else have any other? Questions, comments, suggestions? Yes, Commissioner Levy.
Number one, Emmeline, it was a fantastic job and thank you. And number two, I would be interested in perhaps trying a virtual town meeting. Maybe on each of the three topics, but particularly maybe trying to schedule one on the. Open space, access to shoreline and recreational. If we can, particularly with what's going on right now, try and prioritize what the community feels is important to be able to get out there while we're also confined. And maybe just scheduling a virtual meeting on that topic might. Get a lot of public input.
Yeah, could be, could could be very liberating for people to at least talk about all of that. Right now, right? And in aspirational.
That's excellent, excellent comment. Thank you.
Yes, Commissioner Brown.
So when we actually do the updated P O C D, that will, will that be, I assume that will be after the next census. And there's a whole lot of source. I've just been looking at the old one. There's so many statistics in it. And information that's updated about demographics, things like that.
So 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 we do have a lot of of information to update those. Sections, but you you are right that even after the next census. There will be even more to update. It was not my intention to wait until we had that. I mean, it's gonna be a long time. Think before that data is final, edited and published and made available. That that that's my, you know. Ms. Harrigan.
Yeah, we, because we're a large enough community, we get updated. Data sets that are statistically. Updated on a more regular basis.
Can you, can you, can you boot who we're receiving back there?
So so we get updated census information on a more regular basis than the every ten years based upon our population size. So I think that, you know, for communities that end up in between the ten-year census cycle. They just either will use updated information that's constantly being statistically updated, either by the state of Connecticut, economic development. CIRC updates a lot of the town data. So, you know, we're not required to use the census data. We're just required to you to to generally show a snapshot of the regular. Data sets that help explain kind of the snapshot of where Fairfield is today.
Yeah. And then in just to follow up on that, I think the current snapshot that we have is like 2016 data. So it's not 2010. A lot of this, you know, through MetroCog and those other. Sources that Emily said. So, you know, it's 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 nice, but it'll be as updated as as we can. And I'd I'd agree. I don't think we necessarily have to wait because the data for a 2020 census is is going to be probably three or four years out at least.
Yeah. And and MetroCog, you know, we did capitalize on the regional planning. Cycle and and all of the data that that grew out of that. So. Yeah.
Also. Updated sort of statistics on the threat we face for climate change and coastal erosion and. Stormwater issues, especially with the expanded development we've been doing. I don't know where that data. Would exactly come from, but I'm sure it will affect our development needs in the future.
I'll let Ms.
So we are required to include the latest. CIRCA information, which is the. Connecticut Institute for Resiliency and Climate Adaptation, which is housed out of Yukon. So they have a host of, it's kind of like a cross-disciplinary. Board and advisory group that looks at coastal analysis. There's coastal engineers. There's. Other climate scientists who really kind of look at. What the threat to Connecticut is in terms of sea level rise, both in terms of the overall land subsidence. Which is a function of our recovering from glacial influence. And then as well as what the expansion of Long Island Sound is due to increased temperatures. And also glacial melt and that type of thing. So we do use fairly robust information as provided to us by the state of Connecticut and CIRCA.
Information that sort of looks at how we have added to our. Development over the years, adding more impervious surfaces and the strain that might put on our stormwater capacity.
I don't know. I think, I think that the engineering department. Would be a better source for that in terms of our overall impervious surface. Yukon Clear tends to do DIS analysis where they look at that from an aerial photography perspective in terms of. Building envelopes and what they can, you know, so they'll take the actual aerial photograph, look at the building envelopes, they'll look at tree cover. They'll look at pavement area. And they'll give us the general percentage. It may not, it's gonna, it's gonna probably have a certain percentage of error. But I don't know what that means in relationship to the age and capacity of our storm drain system. In terms of the overall size of pipes versus what it should be. There was recently adopted within the last three years. Can you be real quick? There was recently adopted within the last three or four years, what's called the MS four requirements, which is the municipal stormwater. Storm system, something, 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 that whatever the four Ss are. That basically pertain to kind of the lack of stormwater capacity that we have within our our public infrastructure and the fact that. Moving forward, now our engineering department is specifically required to have individual property owners retain some of that potential. Runoff with an onsite detention system. So we have a bit of catch up to do, but I think the overwhelming understanding is that. Every municipality in Connecticut is facing. This infrastructure challenge and the way to address it is not through expansion. Of public infrastructure where where possible, but actually through individual homeowners taking the responsibility of. Retaining some of that runoff on their own properties, that that's the cheapest solution available to the state of Connecticut and individual towns.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much. And I I know that that is a subject matter, a topic that. Harrigan knows quite a lot about. And it's great. A terrific resource that we that we have. Anyone else? Okay, I don't see any hands. All right.
We appreciate your attention and feedback and we will report back on the game plan to follow.
Okay. And again, so, you know, Mr. Went. Great job on the affordable housing piece. A lot of work. Thank you very much for pulling all that together, Ms. Harrigan. That was. Amazing. Great review of all of the the work that we did there on the. On the P O C D and the and the public, public hearings. And with that, I will adjourn the meeting. Bye, everyone.